Now, staff call this session, let's put them in charge and let them tell us what they've got for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna move straight to the substantive items on our agenda this evening, beginning at item six, which is a public hearing regarding the preliminary subdivision plat at Zero Tiffany Drive. And then there are several zoning text amendments, and Mr. Shaw is gonna help us through those items during the work session. Mr. Jude Day will provide leadership during the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you may remember in August this past year, rezoning, the council approved that was out off of Tiffany Drive. It's what we've referred to locally as Carflo Farm Property that runs from Tiffany Drive about where the Grand Furniture Store is over to Littlewood Boulevard. The rezoning allowed a mix of high-density, single-family residential units and high-density apartment units. The rezoning would have allowed a total of about 600 dwelling units, 200 apartments, and the remainder in some sort of a single-family, either attached or detached configuration. The developer is backed with the subdivision plat. The plat divides that part of the property that was zoned for high-density, single-family, either attached or detached dwellings. The density is quite a bit lower than would have otherwise been allowed, right? It calls for 62 single-family detached units, 110 single-family attached villas, that would be duplexes, quadruplexes, things like that. And then 36 townhouse units, which are typically six or eight or 10 units in one structure. So the developer has also provided as part of the plat those open space areas that were called out in some properties. So the staff and planning commission has found that the subdivision meets the standard of the ordinances and conforms to the original zoning application and recommended approval. Glad to answer any quick questions anybody might have about the subdivision itself.
Jim, I was trying to get my, pack it up and having some trouble, so I missed a little bit. I just wanted to make sure. I know we also talked about the mixed-use trail, and was that included in the final plan?
Yes, sir, it has been. The next item, item number seven, public hearing for zoning text amendment, is also put forward by the applicant at Tiffany Drive over in Development. It is something that the developer points out is, I think, a peculiarity of our code. It isn't necessary that they have this text amendment to complete their development, but could be useful depending on their final type of building structure, especially townhouses. And our zoning ordinance says that the driveway cannot exceed 25% of the width of a lot. So in other words, if you have 100-foot wide lot, the driveway can't be any wider than 25 feet. However, it also says it shall not exceed 12 feet or the 25-foot lot width, whichever is greater. In a townhouse, what you have is a structure with attached units, and lot lines run through the unit. And so in a vertical townhouse, the unit itself may only be 25 feet wide, which would mean that the driveway could only be 6.25 feet wide, so 25% of 25 feet. And there are some units that people are building where you have a vertical townhouse with a garage. And so the applicant has suggested a zoning text amendment that would allow 12 feet driveways or 25% of the lot width, whichever is greater. If the council chooses not to amend the ordinance, this developer can still move forward with their plan, but the text amendment was recommended by the planning commission and staff. Then finally, for planning matters, there's a public hearing to amend the zoning text to include a description of contractors' offices. Contractors' offices aren't currently described in the code. And as staff was going through what we would assume to be the map amendments that would follow the MXB, that Mixed Business District that was adopted recently by council, in consideration of the basic city area, that as we were looking at how to apply that to individual properties, it became clear that there's contractors' offices that, you know, for which no description exists in the zoning ordinance. And so this is simply to insert a description for contractors' offices. And they would be allowed in the light industrial highway business and the MXB or the mixed business districts.
Is there anticipation of particular industrial applications in a contractor's office? I mean, is that someplace that they will be preparing lumber or something?
No, I think in the immediate future, we do see that there are a couple of existing contractors' offices that would fall into that MXB district once we apply that to the zoning map. And so the zoning administrator raised the question, well, where do these fall? Are they a conforming or non-conforming use? Often you do have contractors, especially a large contractor's office where there's outdoor storage of equipment and materials in industrial districts, and they're less common in local business districts. But even with that, oftentimes a contractor's office is a fairly enclosed operation, and that's what exists in some of the basic city areas now. Mr. Hamp, I believe that brings us to the regional jail.
Yes, sir. The next item relates to a presentation regarding the potential expansion of the Middle River Regional Jail. For background, the Middle River Regional Jail began operating in 2006, at which time the facility was constructed new. Original members at the jail include Augusta County, Stanton, and the city of Waynesboro. In 2015, Harrisonburg and Rockingham joined the authority through a buy-in agreement established with the original members. The facility is overseen by an authority which is comprised of the chief executive officer, the chief financial officer, and the sheriff for each of the member jurisdictions. Currently, the average daily population is increasing due to increasing incarceration rates. The operational capacity, or excuse me, the population exceeds the operational capacity of the jail and prompts the member jurisdictions to consider and evaluate options for expansion of the facility. Facility expansion is expressed in two distinct terms, one being the rated capacity, which is established by the Department of Corrections, and it forms the basis of the financial support that the Commonwealth provides of the facility. The other term is called operational, or referred to as operational capacity, and that refers to the number of inmates or individuals that can be served at the facility. Middle Rivers had a rated capacity of 396 since it was established in 2006, and an operational capacity of 600. Key considerations in operational capacity include the core infrastructure such as food service, medical and mental health services, laundry, recreational visitation, storage, those types of things. For calendar year 2020, the average daily population at the facility was 843, with 37 inmates on home electronic incarceration. The in-house population of 806 exceeds obviously both the rated and operational capacity. And it should be noted that that 843 number is underrepresented of typical experience due to ongoing efforts at the jail and in the criminal justice community to manage and reduce population at the jail given the COVID-19 pandemic or the coronavirus pandemic and the COVID-19 illnesses. Since 2015, we have seen population spikes to reach 1,000 or more at the facility. This increasing inmate population places stress on both the facility and the staff. And when I say stress, I don't mean the emotional stress. I mean test the limits of the staff and the facility in terms of food service, laundry, visitation, those other core functions, to deliver adequate care and service to the inmates there. When the jail was originally constructed, the Commonwealth participated at 50% of all eligible capital cost. And today, presumably for financial reasons, the Commonwealth has reduced their contribution to 25%. So if after programmatic consideration and financial consideration, it is determined to expand the jail, member jurisdictions can expect to be responsible for 25% of eligible capital costs. There is a well-established and formed process in the Commonwealth for evaluating jail capacity and projecting jail bed needs into the future. A key element of that process is called a community-based corrections plan, which we have conducted in our region. And that plan determines that more than 1,200 beds will be required in the region by the year 2029. The authority board has reviewed more than seven concepts, each with different permutations or alternatives, making the total number of potential solutions considered by the authority in excess of a dozen. Those potential solutions range in cost from $96 million to $6 million. I would tell you candidly that the $96 million option is almost or nearly prohibitively expensive and doesn't receive extensive, serious consideration, at least by Waynesboro and from what I can perceive by the other member jurisdictions. Similarly, the $6 million solution introduces such limited benefit to the problem that it's barely worthy of serious and extensive consideration. So as an individual representative to the authority, I would say that my interest is to focus on those solutions that lie in between those two outer extremes. And I would say also, the staff have done an excellent job in responding to persistent requests for additional options, additional information by the members of the authority board. We've been working with a contracted architect who performed or helped perform the community-based corrections plan and has worked with the staff to develop various expansion options. I think the staff will stress that in addition to creating new bed capacity at the facility, there is an equally pressing need to attend to renovation expansion, improvement of those core functions such as the kitchen, the medical, the visitation, the laundry, et cetera. Mr. Jeffrey Newton, superintendent of Middle River Regional Jail, will deliver a presentation summarizing process and opportunity and problem or challenge for the council. I think you'll find Mr. Newton to be experienced and well-informed in correctional facility management and on this project specifically. And at the end of Mr. Newton's presentation, we'll afford the council the opportunity to ask questions, and I will seek guidance to the extent the council is able to furnish it this evening. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Now, Mike, I was just wondering, are we gonna get information between the $96 and the $6 million in this presentation tonight where all those other programs are?
Yes, sir, you will. Mr. Newton has developed a solution that he recommends as now the preferred project alternative. It costs about $40 million, and I think that that project begins to better approach what might be considered affordable. I want to be careful not to speak for other jurisdictions or other authority members, but I think that's in a more affordable range and affords meaningful benefit and improvement to the facility. I think that we might press further as a community and as an authority delegation to explore the $40 million option more extensively and see if there's the ability to refine that further. But yes, sir, in short, you will receive, I think the information will focus more on that neighborhood in terms of cost and solution scope.
And out of those costs and solutions, we're just receiving this tonight, how much time, you know, before we can start making recommendations to you, are you expecting us to take?
Well, I think if the council has immediate reaction and feedback, I'm happy to receive it tonight. The authority board is scheduled to meet next week, and I think the superintendent's preference or hope would be that we would make a decision about project scope. I think in all tander, it is a lot to ask an elected body to receive this volume of information on this complexity of a question and say, and request a quick turnaround in that regard. So I think to the extent that you have reaction and feedback tonight, please provide it. To the extent that you require additional time, please communicate that as well, and our delegation will carry that message back to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Hamp?
Yes, sir.
You said that the state used to provide 50%, and now they have lowered that to 25%? And I think what you said was that we're responsible for picking up the extra 25%, correct?
I misspoke in that regard. So if the state is furnishing 25%, the member jurisdictions will then be responsible for the remaining 75%?
Right, but at one point you said they did give us 50%, correct?
That's correct.
And then they dropped that off, and so now we're responsible for 75%? And that 75% is split between all the jurisdictions there, but it's kind of based on your usage of the jail?
Yes, sir, precisely. Presently, our usage equates to about 15%, 16%?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mike, I'm sure other folks have been seeing emails here in the last 24 to 36 hours. And some of them throw around statistics, and I don't know if those will be addressed this evening or not, but one of them was sort of our rate of incarceration being higher than the average. Do we know if that is indeed the case, or is that a misconstrued statistic?
Well, I would want to understand what the rate of, what the math is on the rate of incarceration. I would say this, that I have seen probably not the extent of public feedback that perhaps the council has received, but the number of the comments and questions that I have seen relate to what programs, if any, exist in the community to sort of manage the population at the jail. And I think unfortunately, there exists a number of programs that do seek to divert individuals from incarceration. A number of agencies that quickly come to mind, the Blue Ridge Court Services Unit has three or four different programs that are specialized and intended to reduce jail population, reduce jail overcrowding, and basically furnish better and more attentive rehabilitated services to folks who are involved in the criminal justice system. Similarly, the Valley Alcoa Safety Awareness Program has a DUI court that seeks to divert individuals from incarceration. And so I think it's unfortunate that perhaps these programs exist and don't don't carry as much common awareness in the community as they might. I think that there's probably a good conversation to have in the community about, given the fact that these programs exist, are they adequately funded? And what are reasonable expectations for their ability to reduce incarceration rates and overcrowding? I would say, and I think that you'll hear from the superintendent, that there are both strategic efforts presently to reduce population at the jail given the public health emergency, but also ongoing efforts recognizing that in a modern world, that there are alternative means by which people are rehabilitated and justice is achieved and administered in our communities. So that's a long-winded way of saying, these programs exist. They don't seem to be impacting to the extent that people might hope the population at the jail. One statistic with which I am familiar is that our problem or our challenge can be conditions that Middle River Regional Jail are not unique to the valley, that there are a number of regional jails that are operating, probably three, I think, in the Commonwealth that are operating at 200% of capacity, and probably a half a dozen more that are operating at 150 to 180% capacity. So this doesn't appear, at least statistically speaking, to be a peculiar function of either judicial philosophy, prosecutorial philosophy, or any unique circumstance in our area or our community that produces overcrowding at the jail.
Mr. Hamp? Do we have the information of how many people went to some type of diversion-type program and then failed that program and then ended up being incarcerated?
Goodness, I do not. I do not have that information.
Do we know if that information exists, and I'm sure it would? And then second, there was some talk about people that might be in jail referenced to like marijuana, and would the states help you on what marijuana is now and the legality of it? Do we have anybody serving time over there for simple possession?
My understanding is that incarceration for simple possession is not a current habit or practice in the court system, and that really, I think, the judges share an awareness, the prosecutors share an awareness, and again, are trying to make decisions that would give relief to the jail without compromising the integrity of a criminal justice system or putting the public safety at risk.
And another thing I would be interested in, the number of population that's serving time now. How many of them, this first time that they've been incarcerated, and how many of them are repeat offenders?
Right. I think recidivism is a concern at Middle River. I cannot provide any statistics. I would say it might be a question that Superintendent Newton can answer, and I spoke with Mr. Newton earlier today. If there are, please don't be reluctant to ask questions. If we're able to answer them tonight, we will, and if not, we'll do the research and bring that information back to you.
Thank you.
Dr. Hostetter, to be aware, we'll be back to council. If in fact a project scope is confirmed, I think the localities will have to borrow money, issue debt to do that, to accomplish a project, and it will require an affirmative vote on the part of the elected body. So you'll get another crack at this either informally by saying, "Mr. Hamp, we'd like for you to come back with more information." And then again formally, if a project is confirmed and it's determined that we need to issue debt among the member jurisdictions in order to pursue the project. I'm sorry, Dr. Hostetter, I cut you off.
Quite right. Just to sort of follow up on what Mr. Allen was talking about. The estimates of 1,200 beds needed by 2029, do you know, is that based on anticipated local population growth, or is that somehow based on the anticipated increase in incarceration in that time period? Which is rather pessimistic if it is, but...
Well, I think it's probably a better question to ask of Superintendent Newton. But my sense is to confirm that it's a function of both, that an increasing general population and then incorporating a forecast based on trend in our community. But Dr. Newton.
Okay. The last question I had is, do they have a timeframe in which they are hoping to get this up and running? I mean, are we talking five years? Are we talking less than five years? Because I'm sure it takes a long time to build a jail.
I think perhaps ask Mr. Newton what he would envision as a timeframe for that. I think certainly shorter than five years. I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's another question, if you want to finish your thought.
No, please.
The question I had was related to, I think, to what Dr. Hostetter was referring to, is that the projection has to be founded in something, and typically, in, you know, of those that I've read or learned about in other parts of the state and country, there's typically some sort of a report, right? So an actual report, that study that was conducted. I think if council could get a copy of that study to review, so we can understand the math behind those projections.
I'm happy to provide that. I'll give you advanced notice. It's more than 200 pages long, but I'm happy to furnish it.
Okay. I'm sure it has an executive summary somewhere in there, hopefully. Nonetheless, it would be important, I think, for us to understand.
Sure, absolutely.
The second one was related to the holdovers for those that are waiting transfer to the Department of Corrections. And then I understand that, that, what I've been told, is that those numbers can, you know, is near as high as 200 inmates. So since they've sort of progressed through the judicial process, they're, you know, elevated to to a different degree of incarceration, I guess my question would be, are we're still responsible in terms of the debt service, even though those individuals are not, should not arguably be in our population any longer?
That's correct. And I think that we go through periods where we enjoy very helpful cooperation with the Department of Corrections, where that population increases. I know that we've called before and said we need some release, and they'll furnish that relief to the best of their ability. I think that number has crept up recently because the coronavirus and the public health pandemic and the limited amount of space in many facilities across facilities removes any flexibility that you have in that regard. So practically, the conversation goes, that's true, you're carrying the debt service. We paid, or the Commonwealth paid for half of the facility, and we pay for more than half the operating expense. So thank you very much for your cooperation in this matter. It's a give-and-take situation with the Commonwealth.
So and to that effect, and I just so I can understand the timeline here, and I know we're running out of a lot of time. So originally began in... and I know we're running out of time, is so originally began in two thousand and six, did that fifty percent contribution occur in two thousand and six or thereabout?
It did.
So, so now the state says that those that are that are um leading the ship in terms of guiding or driving the the uh laws, creation of laws, um sentencing guidelines, others and and the like, are now um that have increased, arguably increased, um and contrib- or contributed at least, to incarceration rates in our area. Now, just so I can understand, I'll probably say this later so everybody listening can hear it loud and clear, um now they're, they've cut that support to twenty-five percent for the growth. Um, but when you factor in inflation, um, it is, it is a fraction of what uh that 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 the the net, the net contribution of twenty-five percent is sort of even further degraded because of the cost of inflation. So, that's more of a statement than a question, Mike, but.
Right.
Yeah. And I think I just find that is i- incredibly frustrating that that we're sort of, again, left, left to our own devices and I think it's uh it's unfortunate.
Right. I think um we've covered that one pretty thoroughly here in the work session. Let's look at um the next item, which is the Augusta Regional Landfill Management Agreement. Again, another regional program. Um, owners of the regional landfill include Stanton, Waynesboro, and Augusta County. We contract with um the Augusta Service Authority to operate or manage the landfill on our behalf, and this agreement simply establishes the responsibilities and expectations, um documents those responsibilities and expectations. So it's um a memory and a understanding between the owners and um the Augusta County Service Authority. The other one expired, we had exceeded the number of renewals available through the original agreement, so this is um, we we begin to move. Uh, the, Jim, if you can help us with the uh moratorium on utility disconnections, please?
Sure, uh, as you may recall, at the last council meeting, we discussed um House Bill five oh oh five, which uh imposes a moratorium on utility disconnections or non-payment uh in the Commonwealth for both public and private utility providers. Uh, it also requires that utility providers develop payment plans for folks who have been adversely affected, financially adversely affected by coronavirus. Um, and then we also received uh money from, that originates in the CARES Act, coronavirus relief funds, to help individuals uh who have fallen behind and who meet an eligibility criteria. There's a provision of the House bill that would allow that a public utility provider whose uh accounts and arrears exceed one percent of their annual operating budget, may uh ask for exemption from the moratorium, relief from the moratorium. Um, City Waynesboro's arrears do exceed that standard, we're we're at about four percent in arrears and water and sewer funds. And so we bring uh tonight uh the the proposition to the council. It's your pleasure to secretly from the moratorium, we would suggest that you would do that. Uh, I'll give a more full rendering of the the issue at the the open session, but if there are any initial questions, I'm glad to answer them. If not, I think uh we'll go quickly.
Actually, I did have a.
Go ahead, sure.
Something popped up and covered my mute button. Um, uh, would the intent then be to be able to utilize um the the shut-off as something that helps bring those folks that are not affected by COVID? Or or how does this help us out? What what do we see as the benefit of doing this?
Well, it's it's unfortunate, but disconnection is, you know, generally the method of last resort in trying to get a bill paid. And so what we find is that um, you know, we we send out quite a number of late notices, probably a quarter of the bills that we send out then have a follow-up late notice, and then maybe five percent of those folks don't respond, and so you have about a hundred-and-fifty or two-hundred people in a billing cycle and and a cutoff notice, and that is what prompts them to pay typically. Now, I think that the message should be clear that if the the household has been affected by the coronavirus pandemic or they have a hardship even during the coronavirus pandemic, um, that we are obliged to help that family out or that household out, that we have either a a payment um option that would be available to them, uh that we, that is quite generous, or that there are funds, grant funds, available, uh either through the the recent CARES funds or prior CARES funds, the council appropriated CDVG funds to help pay that utility bill. So our effort would be that nobody gets cut off that's, you know, they've suffered a financial hardship due to coronavirus, um and that um, you know, we're we're, we have put in place mechanisms to ensure that. But as I say, the unfortunate reality is that without disconnection, then uh folks, we find, you know, we we will have uh customers who don't pay and consequence being that our arrears grow as do their outstanding bills. And so then you can end up with a customer who has a bill that, you know, it becomes, goes from a hundred-and-fifty to, you know, four-hundred to eight-hundred dollars and becomes an overwhelming burden to the household to get caught up. Mr. McCormick?
Yes, sir. So um this evening, I have a agenda item number twelve, um that'll actually be your fifth public hearing for the evening, um so I'll try to get through it pretty quickly. Um, it's spurned by having um budget ordinances greater than one million, one-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, all on the same being an agenda. Um, if your budget ordinances and amendments exceed one percent of your adopted budget, you're required by code to hold a public hearing and do advertise or do a public notice and then hold a public hearing. Um, this note, the public hearing this evening for this item was advertised on January sixteenth in the News-Virginian, which does comply with state code. Um, we've broken the ordinances that the agenda item twelve is intended to cover up into um two different agenda items, items thirteen and fourteen, and they're separated under um like-kind ordinances. So ordinances that can be um intro- just introduced and discussed this evening are in item thirteen, items uh ordinances that can be introduced and adopted are in item fourteen. It's probably worth noting that if it's council's desire and uh Mr. Mayor's wish that we can do all of those items in one swoop with each item, so you can do item thirteen in a single in a single reading and item fourteen in a single reading, you don't have to go into each individual A, B, C, D, E item, you can do it in one item for the whole title. Um, item number thirteen, um items A and J are state rollover funds that we received in the previous fiscal year that weren't spent. Um, so this is to appropriate those funds and we'll spend those in compliance with the state required requirements, that's B dot state rollover funds and library state rollover funds. Um, item B is a transfer to the schools for some expenditures that they incurred during twenty twenty related to COVID nineteen. Items F and G are appropriations from net position of the sewer and water fund respectively for um dump trucks that were in the replacement plan, they were subsequently cut due to the uncertainty um of the financial situation during the budget process, and then there was enough net position in the previous year to put those items back in. Um, item H is intended to replenish the major maintenance reserve in the CIP fund. If you'll recall, we had used a major maintenance fund in the CIP fund to, or major maintenance reserve in the CIP fund to fund an HVAC pro- HVAC um project that Valley Program for Agent Services split with us, um fifty-fifty, they are the renter of the building and with the rental agreement says that we'll split the cost of the maintenance on that. So we use the minor maintenance or the major maintenance funds to pay for that initially, and this ordinance just replenishes those funds to keep that major maintenance whole. And then items C, D, E, and I under thirteen, um are school appropriations, they're items that they have in their fund balance rollover from the previous year and they wish to appropriate them for expenditure for various things. I believe there's a couple of chillers and maybe it's some vans um that they need to buy or purchase with those funds and then a renovation at um for the, I believe, the cafeteria at Waynesboro High School. Item fourteen, um items A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J are where the school board is the recipient of a grant, um they've appropriated at their level and then we would need to appropriate at our level so they can spend the funds and they'll spend those funds in compliance with what the grant requires they be spent. Um, item C is a reimbursement of funds from the insurance company to cover the cost of replacing the damaged light pole at Tiffany and Rossar. Um, we covered that with some local funds so that we could keep the project going. We got money back, so we we'd like to replenish those local funds that we covered with the, that we covered locally with the insurance proceeds. And then item K is some miscellaneous donations, a little over two thousand dollars, I believe, um that victim witness received that are restricted to the victim witness program. So if anyone has any s- specific questions about any of the ordinances in either of those or more detail, I'd be happy to answer them now, or if you have them during the meeting, I'd be happy to answer them then.
Uh, Karen, it just as a matter of organization, my agenda has the items in number fourteen numbered rather than lettered.
I believe that was corrected this afternoon, so the one that's on the website should be um, should be correct, and I thought Ms. um Ortles sent out a nu- a revised agenda.
Okay, I must still have the old one up then.
I'll ask her um when I walk down the hall.
Well, does everybody else have one with letters?
One I was looking at had numbers also, Dr. Hostetter.
Oh, I'll see if I can find the new one, just so I'm not confused when you're throwing around the letters.
I believe that was a late correction, Dr. Hostetter, maybe this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay, I think if if there are no other questions for Cameron, that concludes the material we had prepared for the work session. Um, given the nature, the fact that we have a work session and a regular meeting, and a regular meeting with a closed session, um our I- IT staff have asked for some additional time to transition from work session to regular meeting, so if we can plan to resume at about seven oh five, I think that will give our staff adequate time to prepare.
Mr. Hamp, Mr. Mayor, just, I want to make sure that everyone has an invitation to the regular meeting, that you should have gotten two emails this morning. Um, the first one would have been the regular business meeting and the second one was actually the work session, so I want to make sure everybody notes that and has that um, that first email to start at seven o'clock.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, good. Thank you.
All right, y'all be careful.